Good evening, everyone. This is the Tuesday, May 21st, 2019 Town of Monroe Planning Board Regular Meeting. Noreen, could you please take a roll call?
Anthony Vaccaro.
Here.
Lisa McQuade is absent. Bonnie Franzen.
Here.
Janice McKnight is absent. Jason Swirinsky.
Here.
Jeff Manson.
Here.
John Allegro.
Here.
We have a forum.
I'd like to point out the fire exits. There are two in front of me, one through the main door, another over by the kitchen, and then another behind me. And with that, let's please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start our public hearings on our regular agenda items, I'd like to ask Tony Cardone, our supervisor, to come up. He has a few words, special words, for this evening.
Yes. We all know that our esteemed counsel for over a quarter of a century is retiring, and tonight is his last meeting. On behalf of the town board, we'd like to acknowledge your efforts over those years. Councilman Skygarello and Councilman Cologne could not be here tonight. They send their sentiments. We want you to enjoy your retirement. Please make sure that when you do have that party out in Long Island, we are all invited. And we are grateful for what you've done for the Town of Monroe over the years. Mike, I know over the last three-plus years, you know, we've had a lot of dealings. Sometimes they were dealings that weren't beneficial in some ways to the town, but you always put us on the right path. And I know that with respect to the planning board, you've always put them to the right, on the right path. I'm going to turn it over to Councilwoman Bingham because she's had the most interaction with you over the years.
Yes, Mike, we all appreciate all the work you've done. And I personally, when I first came on as chairwoman for the planning board, you took me under your wing. You made special time for me because I had a full-time job, so you carved out special time. We went over every item on the agenda. You told me the pros, you told me the cons. You let me make my own decisions, helped me guide the board through the things. But your patience, I most appreciate your patience. Without that, I don't think we would have made it. So I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you so much. And now with no further ado, I bring Mike again.
Thank you very much. Mike, before I read this plaque, I just want to thank you for your good counsel. And, you know, I came into this never having been involved in politics, town politics, any politics. And we inherited quite a large, quite a number of intriguing and intricate cases in suits which you have helped us navigate. And I can't thank you enough for your, for everything you did for us. And also, listen, you're always there, you always picked up the phone, and we really appreciate that, you know? So listen, don't go way too far in case you get sick of Nugent, then we gotta get rid of him, you know? No, I'm just kidding. We'll keep riding around, but hopefully you'll stay around too. And again, thank you for everything. I'd like to read this plaque.
Do you want to come up, Mike?
I had this framed plaque made up which has a painting of the High Street Bridge.
It's town-owned.
Which is town-owned. And it says, "The Monroe Town Board and Planning Board gratefully acknowledges Michael H. Donnelly Esquire in appreciation of 26 years of wisdom, dedication, and hard work shown in your role as our municipal and land use attorney dated May 21st, 2019." Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I didn't expect it, but thank you all, town board members, planning board members. I'm proud to serve the Town of Monroe. It's the board I've served for the longest period of time. It is turned over completely, and the fact that you stayed with me for all these years warms my heart. But thank you all, and I wish you all good luck. You guys want to come up too?
Sure.
All right, let me just get the four of you first, please.
Why don't you come over here, Mr. Swirinsky?
Oh, no, not you, Tony. Now you guys? And gals?
We'll get out. We'll get out to the girls.
All right, so what are you coming to do?
Yeah, sure. Wait, George, hold on. Got to wait for the...
One more, please. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks. So did I.
Back to work. Back to work.
Are you billing by the second tonight, Mike?
What did he say?
I said, are you billing by the second?
Thank you all. And thanks again, Mike. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, we will start the continuation of a public hearing for Kingsville Synagogue. We do have a sign-in sheet for anybody who would like to speak, if you would come up and fill out the sign-in sheet. First name on the list is Dawn Salka.
Hello. Dawn Salka, Woodard Road, Monroe. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Cupon Orange, C-U-P-O-N, Citizens United to protect our neighborhoods. I'm here tonight to voice our concerns regarding the property in 10 Kingsville. As many of you are aware, in 2006, this property was designed, built, and approved as a single-family residence. Despite that fact, the home has been utilized as a synagogue for many years without the necessary approvals. The home is in the Town of Monroe but is only accessible by a driveway in the village of South Bloom Grove, which happens to go over the swale between these two municipalities. The curb cut for this driveway went back and forth, but the Town of Monroe allowed this home to be built before the driveway issues were ever resolved. Since this property is located in Monroe, the Bombay Fire Department and New York State Police are responsible for responding to emergency calls. There are significant delays in the response time since emergency vehicles must travel down 17M onto 208 into Village of South Bloom Grove and up World Heights as opposed to going directly up Seven Springs Road. In 2007, the present owner, Mr. Waxell, was issued a CVO for a single-family home. In February 2008, there was an indenture made between Mr. Waxell and the Kingsville Synagogue. In 2018, the land use determination form states Mr. Waxell is in violation of using the basement as a synagogue. This is 11 years later. And also states already being used without approval. In April 2018, the Town of Monroe Code Enforcer denied a request for a special permit due to the fact that the basement has been converted to a synagogue without a permit. In February of this year, a building permit was issued for a generator on this property, which is listed as a single-family home, right on the building permit. In fact, all paperwork foiled from the Town of Monroe Building Department identifies this property as a single-family home, although it's quite evident that the owner's been illegally operating his home as a synagogue for years. Mr. Waxell sent a letter to the planning board confirming peak attendance of 18 seats by those within walking distance, but from time to time, participants may come in from other areas for lectures or special events. 18 seats, how many people? And how could we assure that don't be more than that? March of this year, the owner's architect sent a letter to the Town of Monroe Planning Board with a request for 10 parking spaces and five double-loaded stalls. I'm not sure what that means. This equates to approximately parking for 18 cars. This residence is on a septic system and a well, and putting a macadam surface over the ground will affect water absorption. How will granting special use of this single-family home as a synagogue affect the environment? How will traffic be impacted in this residence? What is the plan in terms of ensuring the safety of so many people in a crowded basement, especially considering the extended response time from emergency personnel? How will the well and septic build for a single-family residence be able to handle all of these additional people on a daily basis? We already know that the owner of this property has shown disregard for the law and has been issued multiple violations in the past. What guarantees do we have that he would adhere to approved zoning changes should they be granted? Due to these concerns, we strongly encourage the board not to move forward with granting a special use permit. I'd like to give you a copy of my letter as well as attached documentation, which the Town Planning Board already has recognized in this house as a single-family residence by the Town of Monroe Building Inspector, as well as a letter from David Church, Orange County Commissioner of Planning, saying the town should ensure that the project has sufficient water supply. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you provide us a copy?
We can do that now.
Okay, why don't you hand it to our planning board secretary? And Dawn, I don't know if you indicated your address. Are you in South Bloom Grove or Monroe?
Bloom Grove.
Bloom Grove, okay.
25 Woodard Road, Monroe.
Thank you. The other name here, I think it's scratched out.
Yeah, it's on the wrong one.
Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to speak with regard to this application for the Kingsville Synagogue? Please come up and state your name and address for the record.
Bonnie Rum, 64 Shore Drive in Bloom Grove.
Excuse me, I didn't catch your last name.
Rum, like rum and Coke.
Ooh, okay.
That's how you spell it. I spoke before, but this is a different issue concerning this home. Because there is a curb cut into the village of South Bloom Grove, and that's the only access, really, although they do have apparently, if you look at Google Maps, a walking path to Seven Springs. Perhaps the best way, if you ever want to let this go through, is that they need to acquire a driveway to Seven Springs. And then all of the other issues about the fire department, ambulance, all of the rest of it would not be an issue for the village. But it's, he claimed originally that he had far to walk to go and pray. This may or may not be the case, but the bottom line is, if he was walking through the pathway, I don't think it's quite as fraught with as many challenges as he indicated on the 16th. And widening a driveway, if you need a driveway, which you actually do because they don't just pray on the Sabbath, they pray all during the week. So there would be traffic, and enforcement is an issue. I think the curb cut should be re-uncut and put back and let them access this property through Seven Springs Road. There's a wide path between two of the homes. I don't know the numbers, but they're on Seven Springs Road. And if you look at a map, you'll see that they can certainly, they have all this money to do whatever they want to do, then they can certainly acquire an easement and make everything else work out better. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come up and speak before the applicant? So I just want to get any other public comment from any of the neighbors or joiners? Anyone? Okay, if you'd like to come up, the applicant and your representative?
Thank you again for your time. It's just, I would just want to start off by just...
Just your name for the record for everybody.
Yeah, my name is Otto Waxell. I live in 10 Kingsville Drive. I just want to start off with an irony that comes to my mind. Some people like to talk about that they shout on the street, "You guys," I don't know what "you guys" mean, "have disregard to the law." But the irony is that here is a person and that already spent for this application between $15,000 and $20,000 and between lawyers and engineers and fees and fully prepared that we can have to do a lot of changes, that it's going to cost thousands of dollars following the law. So if someone in our neighborhood, from the "you guys" people, speeds with five more than the speed limit or forgets to do the blinker when they make the turn, you disregard the law, you're lawless people. But here I am standing as the first person in this whole community in that area, applying and spending tens of thousands of dollars to follow the law. And again, people stand up and just with non-truth and far-fetched accusations. So what is it? Do you want me to follow the law or not? I'm here, I'm following the law. If I made mistakes in my life, yes, everyone does, and I regret it. And I apologize for that last time. It's been two years that we are not praying. Since I started this process, I, we closed it off, and we didn't pray a single time for the last two years because we are waiting for this process to get done. So I am doing my best, and we are spending a lot of money to follow the law. Now, I don't know why people say it's not only on the Sabbath, it's daily, it's every day, it's daily. I don't know what to say other than that, that it's so far as the truth that I can't even tell you. We were never, never did we pray or had people, not on Saturdays or holidays. This is just to make it sound more dramatic. We never have traffic over there, never. We don't have cars over there. I don't know why all of a sudden there is a concern about our well and our septic system.
Maybe from my perspective, it'd be beneficial rather than refuting what the public has said. It might be useful to describe what you intend to do in terms of, again, your congregation, when they do attend, where the facility would be, where you would be praying, and also discussing access. And again, do most people come by vehicle? Are most of your congregants living around you? Just provide your own narrative as to what you're intending to do.
I will do that, and I'm sorry for, it's just, just when you hear all this stuff going around, it makes you feel a little bit because it's just accusations. Anyhow, so first of all, the pad that was spoken about, this is...
I actually have an image of it here on the screen.
Right. So this pad is as wide as this podium, maybe a few inches more. I have read the engineer or lawyer from South Bloom Grove claiming that this is a potential vehicle path. I don't understand this. This is a small pathway that is there already for 10 years. There is no way that there is, that there can be a road to Mountain Road. There is two private properties in the back of this property with no, this is people's lands.
What is the relationship of the two properties?
Exactly.
And what is the, what is the path used for?
Right. So for 10 years ago, the owner, the owner that owns the back property, as I said, I walked with my children three times every Saturday for 45 minutes to pray. So I asked him permission if he would let me cross his property, because otherwise I have to, this is a few hours' walk. I have to walk down, down to 208 and come up Mountain Road. So we asked him permission, and he gave us permission in writing that we can walk through his property on Saturdays. So we just built it a small pathway so we can clean the snow, that we can walk, walk over there. It's uphill. But this is a small pathway for two people to walk through.
And who is using that path, and in the future, who will be using that path?
Me and my children.
Okay.
And this pathway is almost not in use anymore because this was, this was made 10 years ago when I used to go pray in the village. And it's still there, but we never use it anymore, almost. The fact of the matter is that we spent $5,000 to build a fence in front of our property because we don't want people to walk through. I understand that there is certain frustrations, and I'm not here to deny that maybe some of them is correct. I also have certain frustrations lately in the neighborhood. But to give it out and, and just because now there is an opportunity, because there is a public hearing on something, to give out all the frustrations with things that's not related to this, I don't think is fair. No one, no one walks through our property. We are against walking through people's property. I built it a fence. I don't know if it's on the picture here, I don't know how old this picture is, but if you look on the, maybe it's an old picture, but if you have an updated picture, we have a fence right in front of the property that no one, people should not walk through. We don't have people walk through over there. No one is coming with a vehicle, and I've been living there almost 10 years. I never had, thanks God, ambulances with fire departments, and I don't understand what this whole concern is.
Well, let's stick to, again, the narrative as far as what you're proposing to do.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
And as far as parking space, we, for real, we don't need a parking space because we have a few people walking from the neighborhood.
So the congregants are going to be from the neighborhood?
Yes, only. And the reason we do parking spaces is because this is the law, this is the code. And we are willing to do whatever the code is necessary instead of coming and arguing that we don't need, we should change the code because we are having Sabbath and we're not driving. We understand, there is a certain code for everyone. So we have in our application, the cars, built it on our property.
So the parking is being provided because of the zoning regulations that require parking?
Exactly.
Okay.
And the proposed, and this application is proposing to do on our property, parking spaces. It's, we have a very good architect and engineer. It's not going to hurt a septic system and a well system. It's designed the way by code, even though we don't need the parking, because we want to follow the code and be eligible. So we are doing parking, we have enough, a big enough property, our own property, and we're doing parking spaces.
Now, for the public's benefit, what's the total maximum number of people that would be attending the synagogue?
We would never exceed 18 people. 18 people is the highest number, as I said last time.
And what is that based on? Why 18?
We have to pray with 10 adults. Some of us have, you know, we bring only children, we don't, the boys. So it is, as I said before, I don't, I don't want to be on the edge and say that it's going to be only 13 or 14, and then if I have 18, I already exceeded it. This is, the point is like this, the point is there is 150 families moved out over there that everyone, 150 Orthodox people that they have to pray. They have to pray. We have a history of thousands of years, and even, and I'm sorry...
And we're not, we're not questioning, I mean, the zoning allows by special permit the use that you're requesting. So I don't think you need to justify from that perspective what you're expressing.
I understand.
I think is that you're, the people who will be attending your synagogue are going to come from the neighborhood.
Exactly.
Because of the people who have moved into that neighborhood.
Right. No, no, but the point is, there is 150 families. I can guarantee you that every one, single one of them is going to pray someplace, and they're all going to pray in this neighborhood. Now, we have a nice few synagogues that is not, that didn't take, went the legal way and did it, and I don't want to speak about them. We are not here to solve this big, we are not saving a community. We're a few people, we want to do it quietly, we have a close few people, we pray. We don't, we are not the synagogue of the area.
Okay. And just to clarify again, 18 people would attend, they're adults and boys or all adults?
That is, the 18 will be adults and boys included.
And boys included.
Yes.
And then do at any time, mothers or the other children, do they come to the house at that time, or no? It's just strictly the 18?
Strictly the 18. There is two or three times of the year that the women come for half hour, just whatever, listen to the toad's crawl, whatever, there's certain laws on this. Very minimal.
I'm sorry, what is that for?
There is a few times in the year that the women would come over five or 10 minutes.
Okay. But it's not, you're going to have a gathering with families there on a regular basis multiple times per year?
No.
Okay.
No.
All right.
We never had it, and we will never have it. It's just a small, you know, a few people that want, we are, we want to be quiet, and we don't want to be in the big noise of things, whatever.
Okay.
So here we are, we're trying to follow the code and the law, and we're willing to do whatever is necessary to make it legal.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Waxell. Where is the back property line? I'm just trying to figure out where that pathway is in relation to...
Carol, zoom out.
So here is this, here is our synagogue, right? This property, this over here, the property line is above there. Our property goes to here.
To there, okay.
So we asked them, go through here on this pathway. This is a hill up, which was very high with the snow. So we did a small, two and a, two, two and a half street pathway to be able to take the snow and walk on it. And now, now it's almost not in use anymore. We did that 10 years ago. We didn't have time to practice the prayer, and I had to walk through it, because we were fully commissioned by the owner of this property. And there is one thing that I would like to address. It's not correct that we didn't have, this house didn't get a CVO before we had a driveway permit, and it was from South Bloom Grove. We do, we didn't cut in any caves when this house was built. There was a driveway permit, and everything was done with the permit legally.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mike, I'm going to enter into the record. We received some correspondence from the village of South Bloom Grove, as well as we did receive the Orange County Department Planning Review. And so comments that were received from Orange County, water usage, while the applicant has demonstrated that the onsite septic system is likely sufficient to process the wastewater associated with this proposal, the water supply connection has not been demonstrated. Applicant states that the proposed synagogue will be served by an existing public or private water supply, but there's been no determination whether capacity exists in the system for more intense use than the residents existing onsite. Town should ensure that the product has sufficient water supply to operate reasonably. And the county recommendation is a local determination, so it's something that is advisory but doesn't involve a supermajority.
That's correct.
When we come to our decision-making time. We received also a letter from the village of South Bloom Grove. One is dated 9 May 2019, and the other is the 30th of April 2019. And let me start with the April 30th. Offices and receipt of various pieces of correspondence from the property file for the referenced property, predominantly in reference to the right of access to the village right of way, we offer the following. So August 5th, 2002... So August 5, 2002, driveway permit application was submitted for access to Kingsville Drive from this lot. The permit listed Joseph Dierna of JJD Building Corp. as the applicant. Does not appear that this application was approved. It appears from the documentation excerpt of a site plan included with this application that the driveway was, was proposed to serve a dwelling unit. November 13, 2003, and just be mindful with regard to these dates, this was before the Village of South Blooming Grove was formed. So this involves actually the town of Blooming Grove Building Department. August 13, 2003, the town attorney Benghali provided correspondence to the town supervisor, Charles Bowen, and highway superintendent Stanley Kaufman recommending conditions to be placed on any driveway permit issued for this lot. These conditions include that the driveway be limited to use as a single-family home and that the town would not provide municipal services to this parcel, i.e. water sewer, garbage collection, et cetera. I presume that's the town of Blooming Grove wouldn't provide the services. In addition, the town objected to any use by the Monroe Woodbury School District for school bus routes. A driveway permit was issued to Kelly Home Builders LLC for a new driveway by the town of Blooming Grove Highway Superintendent John Dolson on November 1, 2005. Documentation is not included with the signed permit to verify if the application was still proposed for a dwelling unit and if the recommended conditions identified in the November 13, 2003 letter were included in the permit. Should you have any questions or require additional information, do not hesitate to contact this office and it's signed by the village engineer, Mike Weeks, for the Village of South Blooming Grove. The May 9, 2019 letter indicates, Dear Honorable Mayor LaFranco, who's the mayor of South Blooming Grove, subsequent to our previous review of the Kingsville Drive application located in the town of Monroe, our office reviewed aerial photography from Google Earth and observed what appears to be a trail or driveway which has a potential of providing a vehicular connection from Kingsville Drive to County Route 44. We are not aware of any cross easements which would legally permit access through one parcel to the other. We note that illegal use of this potential vehicular connection could have a significant traffic impact on the village roadways. We recommend that the village identify this concern as part of the public hearing process and seek a review at the town of Monroe Planning Board in addition to the previous comments raised by our office. Should you have any questions or require additional information, do not hesitate to contact this office and again, signed by the village engineer for South Blooming Grove. We have from our engineer, a memo dated 21st of May 2019. And actually, Mark, would you like to go over those comments?
Please.
Yeah, David, why don't you come up so we can discuss these?
My comments are specific to our previous reviews of the plans and working with Dave on corrections. He's addressed all of our concerns relative to the plans. Obviously, there remains the concerns outlined by the Village of South Blooming Grove and as well the Orange County Department of Planning. So from a technical standpoint, there's a couple of open items. From a review of the plans themselves for compliance with the town code, I believe the plans have been corrected.
Okay. Board members, do you have comments or questions at this time?
Yes, I do, just one. At the last public hearing, I had asked either you or the applicant to provide us with a congregant map. That would, after two days of hearing or two sessions of public hearing, I think that would really quell a lot of the fears that the surrounding neighborhood does have. Are we going to see said congregant map?
It has not been prepared. I think the applicant really.
Hold that mic in, please.
That congregant map survey that you're talking about has not been prepared. I think the applicant satisfied that question quite well right now during the, during the public hearing.
I, I would ask our attorney whether it is appropriate and is it reasonable to ask for a congregant map? And the only reason I ask that is we're talking about, you know, private households. I don't know, what could we disclose or in what manner could we disclose it or have that disclosed?
Certainly, while in another context, the, the spirit of foil and the open meetings law is to make everything available to the public, but personal privacy issues are protected.
Yeah, I'm not looking for names, I'm just looking for addresses, really. And that's what I would present in my private sector as the applicant team.
If the issue is limiting the number of people and preventing vehicular access, then I think those conditions are appropriate. You know, you can certainly ask for the congregant map, but I think the applicant's within their rights to refuse to provide you with one because the address would identify where they are. If you want to have them tell you the outer circumference or radius from, from which their people will come, that might be more legitimate than the actual dots on the map so you have some idea. But I think what you want to do is limit this attendance to 18 people at all times.
Right. I also want to prevent people from walking through people's backyards because that was an issue at the first public hearing.
Right. The issue that was raised was a neighbor that I think their property is in the town of Monroe, which was to the west, I believe, of the lot over which the walkway is, was getting traffic coming down from the county road and they would go into her driveway, circle around, not find access, and then come back out expecting almost like a cut through, I guess. So she was getting and, and was questioning whether this traffic was associated with this synagogue. Part of the testimony that, that is, that was offered is there apparently is another synagogue close to or next to this particular property. So we really don't know which synagogue they're in fact attempting to access.
This is, if, you know, and I, I don't know if it is this particular synagogue issue. If we can rule it out, well, then we can say, okay, that's a South Blooming Grove problem, not, not our problem.
Well, let's hold off, the board is communicating. We need to make sure that South Blooming Grove isn't negatively impacted during our seeker review. So we want to ensure that there isn't going to be traffic and also ensure that there are not going to be any future connections that would connect the county road to a Kingsville Drive. And that, I think, is a particular concern for South Blooming Grove. You know, obviously the traffic, there's a concern with the gathering place itself, but there's a larger potential impact, which is an actual connection. And so I guess, can we impose conditions or even improvements where it ensures that one does not build a road literally through, you know, because we don't know what easements on the other property. We don't know what rights of access there are so that no one in the future proposes to do a road connection via this property.
You could certainly add that connection. It wouldn't be permissible under 280A anyway because it would be an easement, but I don't know that the topography would allow the access anyway. But certainly you could cut off any right to use that walking path for vehicular access.
And we would agree without question, added, added as a condition to the approval.
Is there a fence or anything obstructing the path in the back or that's not where the driveway has been extended to?
The driveway has not been extended to the back.
The fence isn't in the driveway?
The driveway remains in the front.
Okay, and the path still remains in the back, whatever the.
Like a swing gate or something there? Can we put that there?
Well, that's what I'm wondering if I, I don't think this, just a swing gate, you know, is going to necessarily do it.
It's not people.
Right, right. I'm just trying to think of another mechanism. Well, I think there are still a couple of open items. One is the water comment.
Yes.
And so what would we need from the applicant to demonstrate that in fact they have water? Also, you know, I don't want to close a public hearing because we received paperwork as part of the public hearing testimony, so I think we want to have an opportunity to look at that as well.
Well, first the question that we can ask the applicant, is this property on a onsite well or is it?
Yeah, yes.
Well, then I would think we have to go to our hydrogeologist and ensure that there is adequate capacity on that well. He could prescribe some testing that would show that the well is capable of handling not only the continued single-family residential use, but also the gatherings of up to 18 persons for whatever sustained amount of time.
To that point, I have a question. And I don't know if there's a, this distinction really makes a practical distance, but, a difference. But there's two purposes for this house. One would be for residential living and the other one is for a gathering place. So there could be 18 people who visit the gathering place and they could still have guests in their house that would exceed that 18 people. I mean, I don't know why we're, you know, I mean, I think we're, we're making sure that 18 people is safe to gather in the location that they're specifying to have, you know, public access to. That's one distinction. And the other one is, we call this, you know, we're, is there a difference between a synagogue and a gathering place? I mean, you know, in four or ten purposes may be used to pray, but it's not a synagogue, it's a gathering place.
I think via its size, they were eligible to be regulated as a gathering place. Had they exceeded that size, then they would have had to come in under a place of worship. So it's just by virtue of their smaller size, they are falling within that special use permit category. I do want to speak to, so there was a question raised with regard to the basement and the use, so could you speak to where this activity would occur within the dwelling and, and fire code, et cetera?
Absolutely. But I, before I do so.
Sure.
I want to revisit the other points.
Mm-hmm.
So can we do that after?
Yes.
Sure. So the gathering place is located in a basement. I did prepare an architectural plan that was subject to code review. It was submitted with these plans, it was submitted to the building inspector. Right now, I can say that that space complies with the building code as outlined on my plans. He does, he will need to make modifications to that gathering place and that would be included, or that scope of work would be included within the permit application.
So just from, you know, if you could let us know, how is access? How does one access that space? Is it through the front door and then they go into the basement or through an exterior door for the benefit of the public?
It's a separate entrance. It's on the side of the building. It accesses directly into that gathering place.
And is most of the gathering place subterranean or is part of it the basement?
All of it is, all of it would be considered in the basement.
Okay.
Subterranean is.
Meaning most of it's below, below, below grade?
But yet access to it is obviously on grade. So a portion of it is exposed to the one side of the building.
Okay. Any other members have questions? So I think.
Well, I, I want, let's, let's go back to some of the past points. You know, I just want to reiterate the one, one in particular, and that's this walkway or path that's outlined on the property. Again, as the applicant mentioned, there is no way that this is intended to be for vehicular traffic. It's never been used, it's not designed for that type of use. And to make it applicable for vehicular use would take quite a bit of design work because of the grades as mentioned and because of the type of earth. So there's no cross easement through this property to allow such a thing. That's clear, number one.
And, and you would be okay with a map note or other restrictions that?
Actually, without question.
Okay.
Without question. The second thing is the, the water supply. Again, this is very specific and limited use of the 18 people or up to 18 people. It's not a continuous use on a daily basis. So going through the process of hydrogeologists and a report associated with that, I think is extensive in this regard. I mean, we can determine the gallons per minute that would be needed to satisfy this peak use.
Do we have any calculations at this point?
Well, the code does. No, we do not.
We haven't submitted yet.
But I'm going, I'm going somewhere with this.
Okay.
I'd rather establish what the peak use would be and then let's monitor the well and make, and make sure it yields that kind of production as opposed to the expense and the extensive dialogue and reporting associated with a hydrogeologist for this particular use. Talking about one well, one facility, one peak use per week. I think it's reasonable for the board to consider a minimum approach to the, to the yield of, to testing the well and demonstrating the yield of the well.
I think at a minimum, we need calculations to begin with. I guess to get a sense of order of magnitude and then make sure that there's a narrative as to what activities are occurring and what activity specifically utilized water. Is this just simply a, you know, having bathrooms or facilities or are there other demands?
That's reasonable. You know, we can provide a narrative, we can reference the Department of Health standards that's needed for water usage, we can establish a rate that should be acquired and then that rate can be tested or can be compared with a monitoring of the well.
Do we have a well log? Would there have been a well log when a well was drilled for that property?
I think what they should do is they should make those calculations, prepare those, propose a methodology for testing the well.
Okay.
And at minimum, we could have the hydrogeologist look at it and make recommendations. I'm not saying they need to hire a hydrogeologist, maybe a mechanical engineer, somebody who could look at it and provide the appropriate monitoring, but the guidelines on what should be done should be looked at by the hydrogeologist so that he can agree to the methodology.
Okay. We'll have a third-party review of it, that's fine.
And, and it's a, it's a county comment, so we're trying to address and satisfy what the county has raised.
I, I understand.
They deal with intermunicipal concerns.
Absolutely. I understand it's a reasonable request, we just want to have a reasonable approach to it.
As I remember, in the plans, in an alcove, there is also a Passover kitchen. And I think when, coming up with that peak usage, what's not clear from the plans, and I don't think what's included in the narrative and I'd like to see, is, is that Passover kitchen for the use of the congregation and a total of 18 people? Or is it simply in that space now that it's being redesigned for the use of the family during the holiday? Because I think that would yield a different amount of water usage in addition to the lavatories that are downstairs. So if we can just take that into consideration and then if you can clarify that with the applicant on, for whose use that is, I'd like to just see that in the calculation, please.
It's a reasonable request.
Anyone else, comments? So I think there's still some homework to be done. I would propose to leave the public hearing open at this, at this point. We can continue it to the next.
We should announce the date and the time.
Okay.
Meeting is June. Noreen will.
Noreen will provide the date.
You want the regular meeting? The next meeting is June 18.
At 7:00 P.M.
Yes. So June 18 and seven, at 7:00 P.M.
What new comments have arisen that would require keeping the public hearing open?
Just, I'd like to leave it open because we haven't sat, in this instance, unlike other applications, we have a public hearing and we did receive some materials that we did not have the benefit of reviewing from one of the members of the public. So if, if we were ready to take action, we could close a public hearing and take action the same evening. So it's not as if we can't do both on the same date. So leaving the public hearing open, I don't think extends the timeframe if there aren't any additional comments. But I think, given some of the concerns and because of information we haven't reviewed, I'd like to leave it open. That's what I would propose if the other planning board members agree. Yes?
Mm-hmm.
Leave it open? Yes? Okay. So we're going to leave it open and we'll continue it on, again, Noreen?
June 18.
At 7:00 P.M.
7:00 P.M.
All right?
Absolutely.
Thank you. You wanted to speak once more? Mr. Wagsell?
I want to, I want to, I think that it's, I wanted to make a clarification on the walkway.
Mm-hmm.
If it's, if it's not much trouble to bring up the picture.
Oh, sure.
I think. I think it's, I think it's, a little bit of clarification, because it really isn't, it's not something...
So I'll zoom in here.
You can see on the map that it's not the case. This is, this is in front of Kingsville Drive, right? If you remember the previous meeting, that neighbor complained that people walk on the property. She mentioned briefly, they go to Moishy's synagogue.
Right.
Moishy's is my next-door neighbor, that he has a synagogue in his house, and he is close with the...
I think it's this property here.
And he did a whole addition to his house, and he has thirty or forty people coming to his house.
We...
No, 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 I'm not going to address that.
Yeah. No, and I'm just saying, we don't have control over that, because that's the village of South Blooming Grove, so...
Right, and I'm not here to say anything about it and complain. I just want to clarify about this pathway and walking through. So she complained people come to Moishy, and she also said that people come back out because there's a fence in there. Look, which fence did they spoke about? They spoke about a fence that I did over here, that it's not in this picture, because it's an old picture right here. Because I don't want people walking through. If someone comes here, now this, this neighbor over here has no problem with people coming to my house. He has no problem with it. He lets me through already for a year, for ten years. But if those people that come on people's properties come to this synagogue, why do they have to even go on neighbors' properties? They come here from Monroe, and they come here.
So that, I think...
The problem is that I have a fence here, so they walk back out, and they walk around the people's house, so...
I think...
What is it our fault?
I think this speaks to Jason's comment that, so for instance, of the eighteen congregants, are some of them coming from the north?
All of them are coming through the official road.
From the south? Okay, so you're not going to have anyone using this walkway?
No one walks on there.
And do you have need for this walkway anymore, once you create the gathering place?
I sometimes, I sometimes go with my kids to my parents' house in the village on Saturdays. It's there. I spend money for it. But people can't walk through, because there is a fence over here.
So I think that's something we'll look at. And you have given the planning board the ability to visit the property, to review it. So that's something we can specifically take a look at. Right. I'm familiar with your fence.
So people can't come through.
Right.
Just a point. I believe the application before the board shows that fence coming out. Because it's in the village right of way, and it's being removed.
Right, and I believe it was going to be moved and located on the property.
Then they should make that abundantly clear on the plan that's before us.
Yeah.
That's how it's currently submitted, is removal, period.
So you're not going to have any fence between...
No, we'll move it back and out.
Yeah, I thought you were relocating it and reusing it, and possibly matching it. Well, that's, that's something to discuss, then. So...
The point, the point is that...
And the actual issue with the fence was the fact that it's in the village of South Blooming Grove right of way, so it can't stay on public property, right?
We are not familiar exactly where the property line is. Maybe we made a mistake, so I was thinking to put it back, no problem. But my point for now is whatever has to be done, we'll do. But the point for the board is that we are creating a problem with people walking through from Monroe to Blooming Grove. This, we actually built a fence to stop this problem on our property. And if people come from Monroe to us, they don't have to come to South Blooming Grove. They are right there. They don't have to walk through. So obviously, the people who walk through on people's properties are walking to other people in Blooming Grove. Because we are right by Monroe. So if they come to us, where are they going? Why are we creating a problem for neighbors?
Thank you. And you'll clarify with your architect whether you are or aren't removing the fence or reinstalling it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So again, with that, we will continue the public hearing to our June regular meeting. That's it for this evening on that matter. And then the second item on the agenda, we have another public hearing for Hillside and Scott subdivision. Good evening.
John, Sarah, and Eric Kellum.
Hi.
Hi.
So this is a public hearing. We do have several members of the public that would like to speak on this item, application. First name on our list is Sally Adams. Sally Adams here? Okay, thank you. Take your time.
Sorry, John. I didn't get the other gentleman's name.
Eric Kellum.
Eric Kellum.
Thank you.
Sally Adams, Seven Hillside Avenue. I wasn't able to attend the last meeting where there was a public hearing, but I did watch it several times on cable TV, as well as the workshop meeting that was held a couple weeks ago. And I have to say, I was a little disappointed in both. Partly because it appears that no board member has actually been to the site. I mean, there were questions about whether Cooper Street ran uphill or downhill, and I mean, all kinds of strange things that could be easily answered by a visit. And we would desperately ask that somebody come, perhaps with a video recorder, so that it could be shown to the board members who weren't able to come. I did email both Chairperson Franzen and Secretary McSweeney, offering to meet with any board member who wanted to come, and I gave them...
I'm sorry, I never...
I haven't seen an email?
I have copies of the emails that I sent.
No, that's fine. I just...
I've gone through my emails. I'd never saw that.
Well, they were sent before the workshop in hopes that somebody would come, in the meantime, my phone number and everything.
I appreciate that.
I'm home 24/7. I can't leave the house, so...
Okay.
This is the third time I've left the house since, before Thanksgiving, and...
Yeah, I have been up into that area, and I know another member has been at that area. But if you want to resend the email, we can follow up.
I send it through the website. Is that a problem?
Yeah, I don't always get them through the website. There's something, I don't know. I'm going to give you my address. You can send it directly to me, and I can forward on to every one of the board members.
I'd appreciate that.
Not a problem. Do you have a pen? I can give it to you right now, or...
Or you want to just write down and give her a piece of paper?
Planning@monroe NY.org.
That's easy.
Right, and I don't know, sometimes with the website, we don't know where they go. They go into cyberspace.
So that was that, that was that form, probably?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, Scott Development has been requesting and being granted extensions since 2006. And I'm just asking that the residents of the area be granted another month for a public hearing. The next meeting, have the public hearing held over as a courtesy and to find out what the board's response to our particular questions is going to be. I hope that's not asking too much. We want the situation to be viewed not through the developer's eyes or through the concerned citizen's eyes, but as objective as we get with a board member who's not, doesn't really have a stake personally in what happens to Hillside. Scott Street, I don't pretend to be able to speak for Scott Street. I don't know their particular situation. I understood from the videotape of the workshop meeting that a road maintenance agreement with Scott Street had been reached the day of the workshop meeting. Mr. Donnelly said he was going to send either Mr. Depew or Mr. Sorrentino a basic road maintenance agreement.
I did send it.
And I thought that the agreement was that was going to be brought around to the Hillside residents. It never showed up. We haven't heard a peep. We don't know. Okay? We'd like it clarified who it was that certified that the trees that were cut were all dead. To the people that have been living in the area and looking at the trees for the last, in our case, 29 years, it's hard to believe that everything that was cut down was certifiably dead. I don't think so. It was also unfortunate that it happened to be at the time of the year when the fawns had just been dropped. And we do have a rather large deer population in the area. We have fawns every year, and I'm sorry if some of them might have gotten displaced because of the cutting that was done. We haven't heard a straight answer as to whether Scott Development is going to repave Hillside or just expand the substrate. Every time this comes up, there's a lot of muttering and, oh, we're going to do this, we're going to do that to the substrate, but it's never actually stated, yeah, we're going to repave it. And we want to know whether that's actually going to happen, or whether it's just going to be, tear up the current pavement and put in a substrate, and down the road, you guys are going to have to do something about the asphalt. At least twice in the last eight years, we have repaved that. Part of the reason we had to repave it was because of the destruction caused by Bridgeview Associates when they built a house at the end, at the Heaton Road end of Hillside Avenue. That house, once it was built, stood vacant for about three years before anybody occupied it. But the destruction had already been done to the road. We have, to a certain extent, tried to keep up the Chester end of Hillside Avenue. However, because, I mean, Scott Development says this has been hanging over their heads for so long, well, it's been hanging over our heads, too. And not ever knowing when things are going to happen, we can't afford, as working-class people, to put out the money to repave or to newly pave a road that's just going to get torn up when this new development goes through. We have a question about the road width, and does it have to be so drastic? The submission by the engineer, Mr. Depew, has indicated that the road is currently about 20 feet wide. Not. In front of our house, it's 14 feet, and you're talking about making it 26 feet. Across from our property is the Clarisi property. You can't get a whole lot of new footage from our side of the road. So that means you're going to be taking six, eight, 10, 12 feet off of Clarisi's property, including their driveway. They're not going to have any room to park. That's all going to be destroyed. We're asking that you reconsider what Mr. Esel has previously proposed or not proposed, indicated as a possible ending for this, that something called a field layout could be incorporated, whereby I understand that there could be some compromises made so that the road is not as drastically changed, and yet, even though it won't meet exactly the new town code's 26-foot road width requirement, it could, to a certain extent, be widened without too much damage. Speaking of damage, the three houses on the south side, which is the uphill side of Hillside Avenue, have established hedges. Mrs. Salmon's property has, 20 years now, they put in a lovely rose of Sharon hedge, 20 years old. We have a rather scraggly-looking hedge in front of our house. It's probably 50 years old. We've been there 29 years. The previous resident put it in. In front of the Wellick and LaPerle property, there's a nicely fleshed-out hedge, which has been there for 30 to 40 years. Is this going to be replaced? It's been commented before that, yes, Scott Development will replace the shrubbery that gets damaged during any of these so-called improvements to Hillside Avenue. So how do you replace a 20, 30, 40-year-old hedge with hedglings and call that satisfactory? You don't. You can't plant a one-foot, two-foot little guy that replaces an eight- or 10-foot-high hedge that already exists. I don't think that's in the plan. Some new information. I know what I've said has already been hashed over, but there's some new stuff that hasn't been mentioned before. There's a swale between our property and the Wellick/Laperle property that comes down between the two properties and intersects with the roadside swale that runs, currently runs downhillside. That swale catches runoff from Oak Drive, which is a road behind us, private road behind us, comes down the slope, and some of it funnels into that swale. I don't know how you plan, how anyone plans to connect that swale to whatever you're going to do to the roadside swale without blocking it off, and that's going to cause flooding on our property. It's going to make an overflow onto the roadway itself if that road, if that water cannot continue through our property swale into the roadside swale. I'm not an engineer. I don't pretend to be. But common sense would dictate that water's going to find a way out. It's either going to go over the top, or it's going to undermine the infrastructure that they're putting in if there's not a way to connect that side swale to the roadside swale. The property at the corner of Hillside and Cooper has not been addressed. I believe the correct number for that is 128. It was a house that was constructed by Scott Development on an undersized lot for which they got approval. And now you're talking about riding the road at that point, as well as the rest of the Monroe Park portion of the road. So you're going to be taking property off a Cooper Street resident? I haven't heard that addressed at all. I think that is a town issue. If even more water is going to be captured by these proposed catch basins and culvert system, however you want to describe it, I think that's going to add to the ongoing flooding at the end of Heaton Road where it intersects with Lakes Road. That particular culvert area has been an ongoing problem, spring, summer, fall, winter, with water overflowing at that point. Some of that water's going to run across Lakes Road into Walton Lake, which is a source for the drinking water of Chester. So I think maybe Chester might have some concerns about that, too. Trying to figure out some of the markings on the little tiny map that I was able to bring up from the last meeting.
Excuse me.
It appears that there are proposed swales on the new lots. I mean, there's something labeled swale. And I'm curious as to whether these are going to be open or closed, and where do they empty out? There's also mention of dams on the property. What purpose are they going to serve, and where is that backed-up water from the dam going to go? going to go? It's been said that the Hillside lots are going to be connected to the town sewer system. How? Are they going to run a line underneath the Scott Street lots to connect into the town sewer? You can't go uphill from those lots to the Heaton Road area, and there's no current system where you can connect to the town sewer from our area. So what gives there? To me, that's not a very good selling point for the Scott Street lots, to have somebody else's sewer line running through their property. Road maintenance agreements. Here we go. I'm sorry that Mr. McKnight's not here tonight. He was the one who brought up the idea at the workshop that there should be separate road, there could be separate road agreements for Hillscott, Hillside, Scott, Hillside, and a different one for Scott. We're in favor of that. We don't want to be combined with Scott Street. They've got a whole bunch of different problems that we don't have and vice versa. So we want it to keep it two separate agreements. We've seen two road maintenance agreements from Scott Development, both of them in the mail, both standard forms with a lot of whereases and pursuant tos. That doesn't really address our issues. I reached out to Mr. Depew. He came to our home in December of 2014. The purpose of my reaching out to him and asking him to meet was to offer our version of a road maintenance agreement, which is pretty much standard form, but it included a couple of things that were not designated by the standard form. And it makes it a little more palatable to some of the residents. Not all of them, but some of the residents would have agreed to this agreement. Mr. Depew, we didn't expect him to be able to speak for Mr. Chi, who was the lead applicant at the time, but he was going, he agreed to present the information that we had to Mr. Chi. I also sent a copy to the planning board through Ms. Troyano, who was secretary at that time, so that the board would have a chance to go over what our suggestions were. I got no response from Scott Development and no response from the planning board, but we wanted to make it clear that we tried. We're not the only ones who think a road maintenance agreement might be a pretty good idea. But our problem or our issues are not with the future residents of this subdivision, which, by the way, was marketed at one time as an executive subdivision. Really? I don't think so. But anyway. Some of the suggestions that I had were similar to what amounts to a contractor's clause, which Mr. Donnelly went over at one point. But we want it written into the road maintenance agreement for our protection, since our experience with Scott Development has not been the best. There have been some promises made under oath to the planning board and the CBA that have not been carried out, and we're a little leery of not including a contractor clause-type information in a road maintenance agreement. We like to have some kind of protection, and if the town boards can't back us up, then we want it in writing that this is what we signed on to. At the April 16th planning board meeting, Mr. Depew said that it was not objectionable to the property owners to have their lots encroached upon. When asked of my husband if this were true, when he was the speaker at the public hearing, he replied, "Not really." And he was right, because the only time we've been approached by Scott Development regarding our individual property was when they wanted permission to access our well to do water testing. We granted that permission in good faith. We don't like to be blamed for not allowing things, but we don't get asked. Things are just kind of done roughshod. Finally, the town board has passed a transparency law for LLCs. We'd like to know whom we're dealing with, who's accountable for these improvements, and the negative impact they'll have on current property owners. Also, we would encourage the engineers for Scott Development to start using updated maps that have the correct ownership descriptions and even the property layouts. As an example, on the south side of Hillside, which is the uphill side, the maps that the engineer has shown don't have the houses oriented correctly. Now, this might be a problem with the tax map or something. I don't know. But on those maps, it shows our three houses as being skewed, when actually they're square to the road. And it doesn't make a huge difference, but, I mean, come on, we're doing something, supposed to be doing something very professional here, and some things are being handled less than professionally. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Next person on the list to speak is Michael Wellock.
Yeah, of course.
Sure.
Michael Wellock, 15 Hillside Avenue. First, I'd just like to ask the two gentlemen what their relationship. Are you the property owners, the developers?
We actually, the new developers, we're partnered up with Hillside.
Okay.
Scott Street, Hillside Corp.
Okay, okay.
We're going to be building the houses.
So I just want to know who I was talking to. So I would like to ask those general questions again. A lot of the issues the residents have, again, speaking for Hillside, is just, I guess, a lack of transparency and not understanding what this all means. So I'd like to ask the gentleman, assuming you get approval, how long you expect construction to take? How are you staging? Are you doing it one house at a time? Are you doing all five at once? And how long, once you get approval, do you anticipate actually starting construction?
So you generally, your questions are directed to us, and then we will ask.
Oh, sorry, yeah. So I want to throw those out on the other thing. Another thing, again, I would like to point out is that we're not engineers. We see the road, most of the issues around the road layout, a lot of them, and we're not engineers. You look at the drawing, and you try and work out distances, but we truly know. In the same way, again, as Sally said, the widening the road to 26 feet is currently at 14 feet. I don't think the drawings show an additional 12 feet on both sides. So I would also like to propose, what I think would be really helpful, is to have a survey and mark out exactly what the new road is going to be, and so that the residents and the board as well can see exactly what the impacts are. Again, it's difficult to understand as people not in the industry as to what the actual impacts are just going off a drawing. I know for experts, it makes sense, but for us, it's difficult to understand how much we're losing based on a drawing, haven't we? So I'd like to propose that, and I believe that would help us understand everyone on the road exactly what is happening. So, yeah, those are my questions and what I wanted to bring.
Okay. So, again, your first question had to do with timeframes.
Yeah, the actual construction timeframe. How, is it all being done at once? Is it one house after another? And how long, once they have approval, exactly how long it's going to be until they believe they can, they'll actually start construction?
So if you could speak to, especially the sequencing, including the road construction, as well as, you know, the timing of that, and then the sale of lots and construction of dwellings?
Normal construction on a single-family house is four to six months, and we would try to do two simultaneous, provided one sells or the next one to follow.
Are you?
It would be as fast as possible.
Are you building on spec, or are you going to?
Yes.
Okay, so you'll build the house and then sell it?
Yes.
Okay. And so timeframes, how many units and time overall do you think, expecting a reasonable market?
They could, within two years, the whole project should be done.
Okay. And then what is the timing of the actual improvements to the road? Is that done first?
Some of it will be done first.
Some will take this.
Yeah. You don't want to really do the top code and all the final, you don't want to ruin it.
Right, as, with the construction vehicles?
Yeah.
Okay. And the whole concept of staking out, just so the...
Everything's detailed on the plans that Tom Depew submitted. I mean, he's not here tonight, but.
Right.
He would speak more about that.
Right, now, I'm just wondering, so visually, can a few stakes be put? Having said that, I think, would we need to get consent from, because it's a private road, right, and it's within a road right-of-way, a private road right-of-way? I think they have to get permission, right?
You want to stake the road, you mean?
So the request...
Where the improvements are.
Well, the request has been that because these are very narrow roads, you know, potentially 14 feet, and then the proposed widening is to 26 feet, and I don't know whether the road widening is staying, let's say, within the center line, you know, on either side of what exists presently, or if it, you know, kind of jogs and does some other things. So if it's offset, so the homeowners can get a sense of how much pavement and grading is going to be introduced, you know, for example, the member of the public mentioned that hedges are going to be taken out and et cetera.
I believe the right-of-way is 50 feet.
The right-of-way is 50 feet, but the question is to install the actual road at the, with the 26 feet, how much is that adding to either side of the public right-of-way? How close is it to doing?
This is all fixing an ongoing problem with drainage and...
Correct.
And road crowning, and this was requested from everybody in the beginning, and now it's a...
Now, we can't...
We'd rather not lie.
Right, we can't, we can't...
We'd rather keep the road at 14 feet.
Right. We can't speak to what the prior planning board had approved, because very few, I think no one was on the original board, but I think the 26 feet has to do with...
Newtown road, private road.
The private road specs, and as I think Mark has said, with private roads and requirements for fire code, I think that's the minimum width.
If we could go left or right, and I would like to be minimally invasive to everyone on the road, I mean, they haven't dealt with us yet.
The original approvals envisioned deciding where the roadway would be widened in the field, and that's why there was a provision that if that required the removal of landscaping, the applicant would replace it. But that was before the private road spec, which changes the complexion somewhat.
Okay.
It's what being asked is for the developer, with the permission of the homeowners, to put stakes where the new edges of the roadway will be so the people of the neighborhood can understand it better.
Yes.
That would require the consent of the...
I had the same question, because if you zoom in to the corner of, the top of Scott Street, the other side.
Other side here? Over here?
Those shrubs are newly planted.
20 feet into the road.
They're in the road from the new homeowner, so what do you do there? I don't want to, I mean, it's...
That is his property.
It's not his property.
It's a, it's a...
His fence is on his property. Then there's a swale, and then there's trees in front of his swale.
Are these improvements shown on the maps, or these are more recent? I don't know. Are they shown on your map?
Uh...
That Mr. Dep... No, but the actual improvements and any obstructions?
I'm going to see if I have it here.
Is it sheet two?
I just want to see what the date is first. This is 5/11/15, but it doesn't seem right. Is this an old sheet two?
I'm just bringing it up because I would love to leave that. I want to work with everybody and then try to keep everybody happy.
These beautiful trees are. It's not on the right-of-way. I'd rather leave it there.
This subdivision map shows the paved, the approved section of the road completely within the right-of-way, if I'm reading that right.
Yes, those trees, those trees are not...
Those trees are in the right-of-way.
Well, the trees aren't shown, so we can't tell.
They're not shown.
Right, but the swale is shown, yeah. That's, that's, it's just something that I was curious about myself.
What happens, I don't know how long some of the improvements have been in the private right-of-way. So if those improvements have been there for over 10 years, let's say, is there any...
Well, you certainly can't get adverse possession over a municipal street, but I don't think you can get it over the travel portion, the publicly traveled portion of a roadway. So if those things are in fact planted within the roadway area and not on their property, they're subject to removal. But the idea always had been before, and there is some room to move that road.
Right. That's why we're not using the whole 50 feet. We're using 26.
Right, so that was the idea, to go in the field and where possible, not remove vegetation that I think everyone realized at that time was not always on people's property line. Because it looked like there was plenty of room within that right-of-way to locate the road.
But it's a sheet two that I received late.
I think we're still at the question about the staking, though, which you requested.
We'll stake out before we...
Right, that's before we construct. I think the request is being made that before a decision is made, and as part of the deliberations to see how much will be paved and to what extent it will affect, I guess, improvements within the right-of-way.
If the board is, you know, saying that we need the 26 feet, which I guess we need... It's got to be 26 feet.
It's got to be 26 feet. So we could stake it, but how's it changing?
Only to the extent that it can be jogged here or there.
If the neighbor on the left doesn't like it, the neighbor on the right's not going to like them pushing it over to their side. So it's already drawn.
What if you were to stake the outer bounds of the right-of-way in, say, yellow ribbons, and then the proposal for where the pathway would be with pink ribbons or some other color? Because the pink could move within the yellow, but everybody would get an idea. I don't mean to add work here, but if this is something that...
I just don't think you're going to keep everybody happy on the road. I don't want to make the road 26 feet, but it's a new requirement.
Frankly, I don't think we want it to be 26 feet either.
It's a new requirement, but it's...
If we could find reasons, you know, or ways not to have a 26 feet.
It's a town requirement now, so how do you avoid that?
Yeah, well, that's, I think, flowing from other code.
We will do what's required.
Right.
I'm not asking...
So you're making that request, and I think the board will deliberate and ask.
Yeah, it's not so like we can all debate as to who loses what. It's just to understand what the plans currently show, so we have a better understanding of exactly what the work is. I think part of the problem is none of us truly know, because we're not engineers or in construction. So for us to look at a map and see exactly how much we're losing, we're talking about losing hedge, maybe even not losing hedges. Yeah, so those problems, some problems go away just because we have a better understanding of...
A better visualization of what's going to occur.
Yeah, that's what I was asking. I think it gives us, everyone, us, or everyone, a better understanding of what has been done.
That looks like it could be done without entering onto the lands of the property owners and would need their consent.
Yeah.
Some of those property owners may think they own some of that land. I don't know if that's the case in the field.
It will be staked out. We're not going to enter onto no one's property. It will be staked out, and if we could avoid, I don't want to take down any bushes that I don't have to, believe me.
I think, again, we know it has to be staked out when you go to construct. The question is, can we stake it out earlier for the benefit of, again, the deliberation? So that's something the planning board will discuss.
Yeah, just to make things smoother, so we go in knowing what we're expecting.
Right. Any other comments at this point?
No, I think not for now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item, did you want to add?
I was just going to say, if you're going to stake it out in the field, if you can actually survey, take a picture of when the stakes are in place.
I kind of wanted to, I thought, we could keep coming back for 10 years. The plans are done. The plans, just because... The plans, just because regular people don't understand how to read engineer drawings, we shouldn't have to go put a ribbon.
They can't see in the field what's on the map, that's for sure.
Well, you're not going on their property. You're not, I mean, I'm willing to put it in writing that if it's possible that there's room to go around a certain tree or shrub, I will. But I can't mock the whole road and not know I'm going to get approved and.
Well, I would ask this. So there's a, it's a private right-of-way.
Yep.
You show a right-of-way area. Are you showing all the trees or improvements within that right-of-way that exist at present?
Everything's on.
Trees and shrubs.
Stake those.
My only question is, before you build, you're going to have to stake out that road anyway.
Yes.
So if you ask your surveyor to take a picture of them, then when he has to go back and replace that stake.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
That's my point. Saves a lot of rework.
Continuing the public hearing, the next person on the list is Gloria. Is it Clarice?
Italian Clarice.
Clarice, okay.
I'm not the Italian.
Okay. And I'm sure I didn't say it in an Italian way.
My maiden name was Hans, so.
Ah, that I'd understand.
All right. I've got a lot of visuals here, folks, and I'm not afraid to speak in front of people. I moved here 20 years ago from Hicksville-Levittown.
Speak at the microphone, so we get started recording.
I moved here 20 years ago from the Hicksville-Levittown area because of the urban sprawl that was going on on Long Island and the property taxes that were going through the ceiling and all the things that are associated with Long Island. I was born in Manhattan, raised on Long Island, moved up here 20 years ago to give my daughter a better life here in Monroe, which we thought we had for a long, long time. Of late, I'm a little disappointed. First, I want to show you a picture. This is my backyard last year. Now, I am on the corner of Hillside and Cooper. Okay? That is not the house on the end which faces Cooper, but I am the original house that was there before they built this house on Cooper. This is my backyard, and you can see here is a big ash tree that was cut down. It's marking my property line. It was cut down because it was struck by lightning the first year I moved here. So it marked my back property line, okay? You can see it there, right? This is the ash tree right here. It was stretched completely across the back part of my lawn. Okay, as you can see the lovely deer there. Lots of nice trees, gentlemen. This is my, the ash tree, but here across the back. I work two jobs in Monroe. I work in the village. I also work for Walmart. I am the front-end manager at night. I run that place, unfortunately. We moved here, like I said, 20 years ago, as Matt backed. We looked at the house this coming weekend. This May will be 20 years. When we looked at the house, we purchased it in June. We moved in in August of 1999. We moved here because it was a private road, and we like what we saw there. We liked the dirt road. We liked the gravel. We liked it all. We were sick of the concrete jungle we came from. My husband's a Brooklyn boy, so he can truly appreciate that. The first week we moved here, he thought he was being jumped in the yard. It was a deer. So just to tell you how he felt about all of this. He was here at the last meeting. I couldn't make it because, like I said, I work two jobs. I am, we have gone through this planning board meeting several times now. This is probably the fourth time, the fourth different board that I've seen. I am not against building these houses, not at all. Development happens. That's the way it goes. This is progress. What I am worried about is the stress and the environmental impact in this neighborhood. And I'm watching it. I'm watching it right now with my own home. Just to go back to what Mike was saying about the roads, we've got a problem with that road. I'll tell you why. My well is five feet from the road, my front well. If you bring up the picture of my house, you can see it there. My well, this is my house, here's my well, here's the street. I am five feet. So if they go further than five feet, these guys are making me a new well.
Cooper Scott. You're at the corner Cooper and Scott?
I am at the, no.
Sorry, Hillside?
I am Hillside. I'm not at the actual corner. I am the only house right now. This one right here.
Okay. Could you show us over?
Here's my trees. Run that over for sure. And this right here is my well. That's my well.
Could you show us over here? We can't see.
I know, nobody can see me, right? Okay. Where am I now? Oh, this is me. Okay, this is the new house they put in. This is my driveway. This is a brick development that holds trees in it. And this is my well. This right here is my well. If you go five to seven feet, you're running over my well. That's my water well. So you guys will be putting in a new well for me. I'm not objected to that. Want to put a new well in for me? I'm good with that. Maybe I'll get better pressuring. Okay. I'm worried about this road widening because we have put a lot of money into trying to maintain this road. We only went up to a certain section because our other neighbors wouldn't chip in with us. You want to talk about a road agreement? That couldn't happen. People weren't agreeing on things. So we did what we thought was best, from Gail, who's my neighbor across the street, and Sally, to Michael's house up to that point, and that's where the road stopped, and it went on. We also mowed the grass in the lots over here. I take care of all the grass in here and mow it, because otherwise it would be a jungle. But now comes the fun part, folks. I go to work one morning, and when I come home, it's yucca flats after the blast. I'm not kidding. Mount St. Helen, for real. I don't know who the tree specialist was, but you know what? They had no idea what they were doing. They went in and willy-nilly, in addition to cutting down trees on my property, my property. That's disturbing. Not only did they cut down trees on my property, but they cut down the trees that my husband put bad houses in so we could keep away the mosquitoes. My husband's 57 with a heart condition now. He ain't climbing no more trees. So I guess that's the end of my bad houses. But I have pictures. Now, everybody or anybody who knows anything about trees, and growing up on Long Island, I know a lot about trees, maple, oak, elm, white birch, we have it all. And we have it in those lots and all around my house. I've got an apple tree. I've got lots of stuff. Trees look dead in March. That's what they look like. Sorry, but they look dead. Every one of those trees look dead. And I have pictures of them in March when they first started cutting, okay? And you could look at this, okay? I just want you to see it real quick. They marked places that they thought was my property. It's a disaster. This little place here is mine, which, of course, they also knocked down every statue in my backyard, okay? And I'll let you gentlemen see this too. And then the green part is just the pictures taken this week. When I tell you my daughter's getting married this year, okay? And we wanted to have some parties in the yard. I can't do it, folks. I've got yucca flats over here. As soon as I look out my back window every morning, I see the devastation. I go out my front door and look to the right, yucca flats. I don't mind the progress. Clean up your mess. I don't want to look at this. I want it done like yesterday. There are trees everywhere downed. There's garbage everywhere. And if they want to talk about dead trees, well, guess what? If you go over to that lot right now and you look, I guarantee you're going to find five or six dead trees still standing. That's amazing, because there was a quote-unquote "tree specialist" there, okay? Disappointing, people. Very disappointing. I grew up in Levittown. 100 by 60 plots. Everybody's house was the same. It was plop and drop. That's the way they built Levitt. That's the way Abe Levitt built it, okay? I came here for something different. And again, I'm not adverse. I love my neighbors. You'll see a picture. My neighbor and I, we have a garden between us that we made up. We made walkways. The kids come over. I love company. I love people. I wouldn't work at Walmart if I didn't like people, okay? Okay. But just to go over, like I said, I go out and look at this. This is not good neighbors. This is not good neighbors. I don't know who this is that went out there willy-nilly. And if they were going to build, then get out there and clean it and hurry up and start building. Because I got a wedding this year. I got to take pictures at my house. I don't want to look at this. I really don't. And like I said, when you say you're going to cut off my property here, again, if you take this away, I got no driveway. I got nothing. This is all me. This is me, all the way around here. That's me. There's my mom and pops' garden. Okay, that's my shed. This is me. We try to keep this nice, beautiful. I even put in pavers, because when we moved there, there was cement, and it was ruining the topography of the land, so the pavers move up and down with snow and ice. Makes it look nice, okay? Anyway, I cannot entertain at my house now. I don't know who or why that was authorized to do this cutting. I don't know if they're going to start building soon, but really, folks, I want this cleaned up. I don't want to look at this. It's devastatingal back there. I want you folks to come to my house, stand off my deck, and look at what I'm looking at. This is not pretty. This is not what I signed on for with my.
So the cutting was not authorized?
I.
And what is the status of any violation, Mike?
Everything was taken care of.
So I wasn't at the workshops, so I don't know the.
No, I was told that they then went in and got a pre-approval after the fact that it was done. And I was told they were granted a permit for these trees, because they had a tree specialist there.
So what is the status?
From request of the planning board, we were ordered to do a BAT study. And the guy came out and mocked all the trees.
You're talking about this planning board or a prior planning board?
This.
This was the workshop?
We suggested it to the health department. Orange County Health Department, and they said, they came back with comments that you should do a BAT study.
No, no.
We were just told that the violation was cleared up.
No, no. This is before, this is prior to it.
But how many, how many years ago are you talking about recent?
Two months ago.
With the BAT study?
Yes.
You requested us to the Orange County Board of Health. Wanted to do Orange County Board of Health.
And they suggested that we did a BAT study.
BAT study.
We paid.
The BAT study came in.
The Board of Health recommended a BAT study.
That's not Orange County Department.
No, they wouldn't.
Maybe we're calling the wrong.
It was Orange County. Absolutely Orange County.
Well, I can tell you, I had, for the last seven years, I call it Patty to Batty every night about 6:00, 7:00 o'clock at night. If you throw a piece of fruit up in the air, Batty comes out of the woods, picks up that piece of fruit, and takes off back in the woods.
The reason for doing the BAT studies.
To protect the bats. Because they come out.
Well, you cut down, I could show you the tree you cut down with my bad house in it.
We need to direct to the, direct to the board, please.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm just speaking to the house. Anyway, so I got that problem, and I can show you that tree that was cut down. And again, they cut down trees on my property line. Now, you can, she's not here, my neighbor from the other side. The day they decided to build, I took the day off from work and stood there and watched them and said, "Don't touch these trees. These are mine." I went to work that morning. Those trees were there. When I got home, those trees were gone. I didn't even know anybody was coming.
Was the, is your property staked?
There were blue tapes there.
The perimeter of your property is staked, the boundaries?
No. No, we know where it is. It's not.
But they weren't staked, so how would the, how would the tree clears know?
We did it on GPS. And all the trees that we cut are GPS marked.
That's impossible, because all the trees that you cut were here, and this one was inside my property line, so we don't cut it.
I'm questioning, if you don't have it surveyed, actually, I mean, on the ground, if you can't see the property lines or the corners of them, how did the tree cutters know that they were staying within the bounds of your property?
They were all ribbon-marked and GPS plotted by.
They were blue ribbon-marked. These trees were cut prior to the ribbon.
And is there, is, is there a map showing the trees relative to your property line?
Yes, Tom has that. Tom has GPS markings, and he's working on plotting them onto the map.
So that's something he's creating? It wasn't something submitted previously?
No, no. It was done through GPS.
So this is something new that he's creating?
The map, yes.
The map of trees? I'm trying to understand what you've submitted. Again, the difficulty with us is this is a.
Forget it. Forget it. The whole tree problem was taken care of. The permit is resolved. We were not allowed to clean up. There was a stop-work order until we resolved everything. So we resolved it with the building department, and it's rained 17 days this month. So we have not got back in there to chip up the dead trees, but we want to get in there right away. We have a permit to do it, and that's.
Right. My, what I'm questioning is, again, there's a comment on the record that's saying that there are trees that are on, located on another property that were cut. How would, so how would you?
I could show you. You got a picture of it.
How would you?
We'll look into that.
Okay, if you could, because I don't know how, now, how would you know if you're not showing it relative to the property lines? Isn't my question? But it could be GPS marked, but then it has to be marked on a map relative to the property lines.
We'll stake it out.
Well, like I said, in addition to these things and the fact that my well is only five feet from the street line, there's going to be an issue with that for sure. And I'm going to lose a driveway. I mean, I'll tell the builders here now, if you'd like to buy my house, it's for sale for half a million. I'm up. I'm in. My husband will move tomorrow. We do, we love our neighborhood. I know all my neighbors. They've been very good to us. My daughter graduated from Monroe Woodbury. We wanted to have a big wedding in the area. We've taken out of the area now because of what's happened, because I can't entertain here, folks. You know what I mean? It's just, it's not going to happen. And I'm not adverse to people moving in. Like I said, I love, you know, I especially love children. They taste like chicken. But, you know, I really enjoy some of this stuff, and this, you know, puts a real damper on it. It just puts a real damper on it. And my neighbors, who have been here forever, okay? You know, they're looking at this and going, why are we, what are we? We've been fighting this since 2003. This is 19. You know, either, pardon the expression, poop will get off the pot. Let's go. You know, enough is enough. I would like to get my neighborhood back. We'd like to get our street back. We're trying to curtail the traffic. One of the reasons why we didn't fill in some of the potholes is because people were coming through like, you know, The Seven Ups, that's an old movie. But, you know, we're trying to stop that. But if they're, you know, you can't stop progress. But, you know, we're trying to stop that, but if they're, you know, you can't stop progress, I understand that. I come from Long Island, I know what that's all about. But, you know, I want to be a good steward in the neighborhood, I want to be a conservator. You know what I mean? I'm not a tree hugger by any sense of the word, but I like my trees. You know, if you go down La Row Road in Chester and you look at that new house development, there isn't a tree on a lot for blocks. I mean, what the heck is that? You know, you want to look at something nice and green and pretty. I love this town.
We can't speak to that, again, before our time. But we're certainly looking into trees, and there's a new tree law in place since 2017.
But like I said, I hope you folks just look at this, you know...
We are, we appreciate your comments.
You know, I just...
Thank you.
I'm sorry? Oh, sorry.
Are you, are there extra photos that you wanted to enter into the record, or you're just going to hold on to those?
These photos, I mean, I have them on my computer, I just wanted to show the gentleman that you have the flats. But here's the tree that, several trees, and they took out my statues at once.
Nobody went on your property.
Somebody was on the statues, okay, because when I came home, they would ask.
Those statues, pictures of statues, that's...
Here is the water hole we're talking about, okay? That's my well on the front lawn, okay?
Why don't you provide us with the pictures, and we'll provide them to the applicant?
Just give me a second here, I want to show the one where you're off, off the grid. I'm not trying to be a BB about it, I just, you know...
Believe me, I'm...
You wouldn't like it done to your house.
Okay. We, we, we need the, we can't have the back and forth, please. Yeah.
I'll even stop by your house and go over there.
Come over and have a look.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and here's the picture.
If you want them back after...
They're quite lovely.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody who didn't sign up that wants to speak that's here, that's present? Why don't you come up, sir? Provide your name and address for the record.
I'm Rich Strobel, S T R O P E L, and I live at 129 Cooper Street. My question was, I brought the complaint to the building department about the trees being cut. I made up a formal complaint, I haven't heard from them about it. At the last meeting, the last workshop meeting you had here, I was talking to Tony after, after I spoke. And he said that they was going out the next day, him and John were going out the next day to look what was going on. All right? He went out there, and he himself said, "I find it hard to believe that all those trees were dead." Okay? He says, so I'm asking the question, who was the one that basically said all these trees were dead? You had an arborist come out, who was the arborist? Let him provide us the information as to what trees were dead.
To my knowledge, it wasn't someone from the town that made the determination, it was someone the applicant had retained.
Absolutely, that's what I, that's what Tony had said. Okay? Now, the question, the question is, is it going to supply the information to us? Now, when I talked to Tony, he had told me that the, they were going to have to plant trees to replace the trees that were taken down. But, at the last meeting you had a week ago Thursday, all right, there was no comment from the public, you were just talking. The engineer, engineer came and said, "Everything's been resolved, it's taken care of, we got a permit after the fact." They took the trees down, then they got a permit afterward to cover the trees they had cut down. All right? Live trees they cut down. All right? So, we have to address that. Who made that decision? Because it's funny, all the trees that are up, there runs on the borders going around. Not the ones in the middle, they're all gone. The ones on the borders are still there.
Absolutely not.
So, the next, the other question is, when they start construction, what's their access to these, 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 uh, building lots? Are they going to park, as they had to do when they put the building up on 128, off the road? Okay, that was one of the, the, the planning board at that time, that recommended that was, that all equipment had to be parked off the road, they had no equipment on the road. They're going to access it through up Cooper Street, they're going to come up through the town of Monroe, and they're going to go up on Hillside Avenue. If they're going to start building, they have to build a, put a, place a nail where they can park their vehicles off the road. Dump trucks, backhoes, whatever they got. All right, that's the, that's the other thing I have.
Okay.
And that's about all I got.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Mud.
Oh, mud. Yeah, what's going to happen with the mud? The mud that's going to, instead of water coming down to me now, now it's going to be mud coming down to 128. You know, and I'm not really sure, but I, my, the plan, the thoughts that I have for the property I have, between me and the person up the block from me, is the paper road is 20, 20 feet wide. And I believe the road going up Hillside was originally 20 feet wide, too. That's the way it was laid out. Each one of those roads was supposed to be 20 feet wide. Now, whether people, you know, took part of that road and put it on their property, but if you're going to go 26 feet wide, you're going to take three feet from each person on either side. Who's going to pay them for that property? That's their property.
Who's going to pay for the property?
I believe those improvements are within a private right-of-way, correct?
One of the notes I have here is that we're going to request from the surveyor, an actual true survey showing the property lines and the right-of-way boundaries for the paper street or private road, whichever one you want to call it.
No road construction will be on any of those property, it's in the right-of-way.
Right, so this is going to be something prior to approval, we're going to request that now?
Yeah, it's part of my multiple notes here.
Great, because I want to see specifically...
That's part of the building code.
Right, regardless of whether it's within the private right-of-way, whatever that is, I think it's important to see what improvements are there now, to understand what may or may not be removed. Because I don't know that that's fully shown on the plans. The existing dwellings, as someone said...
I want to work with everybody and be as nice as we can. But in a 50-foot right-of-way, if you, if the town requested us to do a 50-foot right-of-way, it's not their property. You could take the whole 50-foot right-of-way.
That 50-foot right-of-way is not a town right-of-way.
No, but it's shown as separate from the ownership of the lots.
It's not the ownership of the...
But, but it's not owned by the town, so in fact, you, you know, this...
It's not owned by the property owner, it's not, it's not owned...
Correct, but, but it's owned collectively by property owners, is it not?
I don't know who owns it. Unlike many private roads where the lots are owned at the center line, and then the right-of-way extends across property lines, on this map, they show property lines ending at the edge of the right-of-way.
Yes.
Right, yet those right-of-ways are not public right-of-ways, correct?
The right-of-ways are depicted, but there's not meets and bounds, and there's not an actual width shown. On the road improvement plan, there is dimensions shown for the improvements. But once again, they pictorially show the right-of-way lines, but again, Mr. DePue has to show actual dimensions. We had plenty of issues where we need that information.
Who maintains the road right now? Who maintains, right, so it's not the town's right-of-way?
No.
It's a private right-of-way? So you're making improvements within a private right-of-way that's collectively owned by a group of individuals who, that they've been maintaining it?
I don't know if they own it, I suspect this was a paper subdivision.
Right.
This was laid out in that time where we didn't bond them, a lot of subdivisions in Orange County weren't built. It's probably owned by some corporation that was defunct 50, 60 years ago. And no one's picked them up for tax sales, so they probably are not...
They're just existing...
It's hard to find out who they own.
Okay.
But every, every lot in that subdivision has the right to use them.
Right.
Okay.
But the, but the property, the individual houses or, or, or lots end at the 50-foot right-of-way.
I don't know that it's 50, but they end at what is shown to be the right-of-way.
It shows property corners, so it's not their property.
This is, this is, this has just been, in my mind, it's been a big question mark with regard to who approves. So obviously, the town is, has standards for private roads. But those, but this is an existing right-of-way, it's an existing private right-of-way. And because we don't really know whose ownership it's in...
The law says that everyone has the right, anyone that has a lot...
In that subdivision.
On the map that showed those paper streets has the right to use those roads.
So at this point, you don't have a formal agreement among the various neighbors to actually maintain it, you just happen to do it? So, I'm still, and the reason I'm asking is I'm just trying to get at, these are improvements being proposed within a right-of-way that the town doesn't control, but, but no one else really, again, it's all, and a collective is maintaining it.
It came up at the workshop that there's going to be a road maintenance agreement. If one is not already in place, which we 100% agree to join, we will maintain our own portion of the road. We will put that in the deed of whoever we sell the house to, that you agree to join an existing road maintenance agreement. Or if there is not one, because some of the, some of the other roads, you can't get the homeowners to agree, that you will agree to maintain your portion to the main road to your own house, and it's on you.
I'm going to send what Mrs. Adams gave to me this evening, which is the request of some of the neighbors on the hillside side of the project for clauses that they wanted to see in the private roadway easement and maintenance agreement that would encourage them, maybe not all of them to sign. And so it may be that you might be able to get a lot of them.
I do not object, we, we're going to absorb some of the, whatever they chipping to do now, it's going to be part of us. And we're fixing up the whole road, we're putting a new road in, and it'll be much easier to maintain.
Do we, so we bond that even though it's a private road? Or how does a private road work, and how, and who inspects to ensure that it's constructed to whatever the specs are?
You have the authority in the code to declare anything that's necessary to the public's safety, health, and welfare to be a public improvement, require that financial security is in place.
Okay.
And as far as inspections go, those are done between the building inspector and our office.
Okay. Would the highway superintendent be involved, or not necessarily, because this isn't a town road?
He's going to be involved to the extent that the interconnection with the town road is under his jurisdiction, and he's concerned about drainage. I suspect that as you move further away from the town road, his jurisdiction will fade away. Because he's not, he has enough town roads to worry about, than to worry about private roads.
We're also fixing an existing problem in the town road, the catch basins, I guess, down on Cooper.
They asked us to fix a Cooper issue.
Is there an, is there an existing map, a filed map of the subdivision? An old map that shows these right-of-ways and...
We'll ask Tom for that as well.
Yeah. I'd like to take a look at that.
One more question. Mr. Ansel, did you come out with the air engineer to look at the drainage?
Yes.
Okay, they're going to put two catch basins down, down at the end of Hillside before it hits Cooper?
There's two now.
Yeah.
They're going to put two additional basins, upgrade, upgrade, that are much deeper, that will more efficiently pick up stormwater from the road sides. They're going to create a better crown on Hillside, so that it directs the water to the swales, to the catch basins, rather than just running down the road and crossing Cooper and visiting you. And then they're going to replace the drainage pipe across Cooper, and they replace an existing catch basin with a new catch basin to direct the water down Cooper.
So... These two new catch basins that they're putting in, are they going, is the town going to maintain them? Or are they going to be privately maintained?
I can double-check with John, but I thought his intent was that he was going to take those as part of the town improvements in that intersection.
Yes, that's in the town road.
Are they going to be on the town property, or...
No.
No, we're not sure.
Not going to be...
Again, we'll see the survey, but it very well may be that John Shurney will accept those as part of the town system because they're improving, or they're replacing two basins that the town currently has, and they're that really intended to protect the town road.
Yes.
So I can double-check with John.
All right, what's, what's the plans when you go up Hillside Avenue to keep the water? I know you're going to crown the water, you're going to crown Hillside Avenue, you said, right?
Yes.
That's what they're going to do, crown it. And the water's going to go to either side of it, and there's no ditch on it.
There's proposed swales, improved swales.
Put swales on both sides of it?
Both sides. Yes. All the details, in case anyone wants to look at them closely, are on drawing four of the set. Shows in Hillside, there's an existing paved area, they're widening that, and then overlaying the entire road with oil. Scott Street is, let's say, less improved as far as the surface. That's going to be regraded, refinished, and constructed to near the current private road standard.
Hillside is going to be oiled and chipped, is what you're saying?
They're going to oil and chip over top of asphalt. Again, one of the benefits of oil and chip is a seal coat on the top. It'll fill those joints between the new pavement, the old pavement, and also provides a little bit more traction. Has no structure, but it's a surface.
Can you check with John to see if, in fact, he's going to take over those new catch basins?
I will, I will.
Okay, thanks.
I'll make sure we get an answer.
Yes, sir. Yes, you can. Good evening, and if you'll just state your name and address again for the record.
My name is Robert W. Adams, 7 Hillside Avenue. At the last planning board meeting...
Adams.
Adams.
I'm sorry.
It was said that the town of Chester, highway superintendent was going to be contacted about the vast amount of wastewater that comes, comes down from Oak Street, down Heaton Road, around behind our mailboxes, and down the swell on Hillside Avenue.
The stormwater? Stormwater?
Exactly.
Okay.
And sometimes it's a whole lot. Because there's a whole lot of, a whole lot of uphill, and water, water runs downhill. I mean, most all of that development up there on Oak Drive and Hickory and all that, that's all uphill from us. And all of the stormwater runs down and winds up, run, a lot of it runs down Hillside Avenue in, in the swell and winds up flooding Mr. Strobel's yard.
Have we had an opportunity to talk to the Chester Highway Superintendent?
No, just the town of Monroe Highway Superintendent at this point.
Okay.
I can reach out to town of Chester as well, maybe set up a joint meeting with both highway superintendents.
Can I just make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
Our road about six or eight years ago was rebuilt by Robert Valentine, who is now the supervisor of the town of Chester. And he knows a lot about that. And the wastewater that comes from Chester into Monroe has to be addressed. They're talking about widening the road only as far as the town of Chester, the town of Monroe line? What about, the wastewater comes from Chester, what are they going to do about that?
I think, I think the applicant has to take care of the stormwater that they create, and they can't create a situation where they exacerbate existing conditions. But if the development is happening in Chester, they really can't do anything to, you know, improve or mitigate a situation that was created by someone else. But we need to make sure that in their improvements, they're not essentially, whatever's happening from Chester, making it worse. And that's really the responsibility of the engineers and the highway superintendents. Having said that, though, we will talk to the Chester Highway Superintendent, because that's an existing condition that obviously is a problem regardless of additional development.
Okay, but the thing is, doesn't matter, the water comes from Chester, and it has to go somewhere.
Right.
And it has to be, that has to be addressed, it just can't...
It doesn't stop at the boundary?
Yeah.
Understood.
They're talking about doing as far as the town of Monroe line, and then, you know, the heck with the rest of it. That's all a bit ridiculous, because the stormwater comes, and a lot of it. And that has to be addressed. If perchance we have to contribute to the cost of it, fine. But it has to be addressed, and when, it should all, probably be all addressed together while they're, while it's being done. I mean, wouldn't you think?
I think it's something that we'll look into.
I'm hoping.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Anything, Mark, that you want to go over at this point?
No, I have plenty of information, there's plenty of issues. I believe some onsite meetings would be beneficial, so that we could better understand some of the concerns. I think there would be some benefit if the applicant staked out the right-of-way once Mr. DePue gets the record information together, the, perhaps the original filed subdivision plot.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Deeds, and even a, perhaps, if it was a paper street, it might even have had a meets and bounds description for an offer and just never got taken by the town. So I think we need more information. Once we know the width of the paper street or the road reservation, we can make sure that the proposed improvements are well less than that width. If at that point there are private improvements that are in that road reservation, that's a whole separate issue, and I think might outline the rights of the, all the property owners to utilize that road reservation. And that would include these property owners. But that's a, quite a long bridge we're going to have to cross once we have more information.
Right, once we have a survey that shows whatever improvements are there. So, I think at this point, planning board members, any questions at this point you want to raise? Mike, in terms of, do we have default approvals on final if we close public hearings? Is there a timeframe within which we have to act?
Yes, 62 days.
Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to recommend that we leave this open.
I would second that.
For the time being, till we have some additional mapping. I'd feel more comfortable that way, that we're not triggering a timeframe. Everyone's good with that?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, so we're going to leave the public hearing open. We will continue it to our June 18th meeting at 7:00 or thereafter. All right? And you'll get us additional information, and you'll be hearing from Mark's office, so we can do some final review.
Let me just clarify, you want us to stake the...
I suggest you not stake anything until Tom gets us appropriate information, yeah. If they voluntarily care to stake things out after Tom is sure as to the bounds of the road reservation, that might be a good tool to have done, so that the planning board members could visit and look at it perhaps before June 18th.
Right. I think, I think it would be a good idea to stake it, but I think it'd be beneficial to have, if Tom is going to actually create a map showing the existing conditions, we're going to know.
I think if Tom certifies it as a certified engineer to tell you where it's going to be, I just see it wasting months and months and months if everybody's going to want to come out there and see where ribbons are and where stakes are.
At, at a minimum, if we have a map, we'll know from his certified survey whether there's improvements within the right-of-way.
On the map.
It'll become clear.
If the survey shows that the roadway will not need to encroach on any of the improvements of the neighbors, even if they are off their property line, then there's no need to stake where it will be. If, however, the roadway, the area that's unencumbered by improvements is too narrow, I think it would be helpful for everyone to know where the roadway is going to go. But I think the first step is the survey.
Yes.
One of the things I'd like him to show is that, I'm not sure on Hillside, it seems that there are some homes, it doesn't look like they have driveways, and they may. I don't know if they're just parking sort of in the front. You all have driveways going in where you're, okay. Because I didn't know if, you know, if they're kind of parking in the front, that they'll get wiped. Okay, all right. But that'll probably show up on the, on the survey anyway.
All right, are you telling us that Tom is in the process of preparing a new detailed survey of all existing conditions on both roads?
Let me just ask you for that, I'm going to get in touch with him.
Okay, so you're, yeah, because I wasn't aware of that, so you're saying you're going to ask him to do that now?
To show, to show where the road is going to lay out.
Yes. Yes.
Well, there's two ways to do it, you can either stake it out, and you can visually check it by walking the road and seeing where...
Or show it on a map.
Or you show it on a map based on a very detailed actual survey of existing conditions.
I'll leave it to Tom, I really don't...
Yeah, you should talk to him about the options.
Yes.
But the stakes have to be, if you're going to go the stake route, there have to be sufficient stakes to be able to follow the line, you know? They shouldn't be really wide apart, so we can't determine that.
Is the board good with either approach?
I like the idea personally of having a survey, only because I'm concerned that if I'm looking at a series of stakes and depending on how far apart they are, will I really see the line and the improvements? Whereas if it's a certified survey, you know, maybe you'd see that better. That's just my reaction, I don't know how the other board members, what your thoughts are. Or if you think it's better to visualize... Or if you think it's better to visualize it and stake it out.
One of the benefits of the, of the detailed existing condition survey is that it documents what's where before any construction starts.
Yeah. That's why.
And any conflicts could get resolved with the individual property owners perhaps before the construction starts.
Right.
I do find with stakes, with neighbors, that.
Stakes don't work.
When they don't like where it is.
It gets moved.
So, I, I'll go over with Tom and see if he's gonna do it.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I would like to see, I mean, I personally would like to see a survey, a map.
I would, too.
Um, are you doing a tree survey of some sort? Or what is the addition, what's happening?
It's all done.
It's been done. It's been submitted to the.
So, the building department has this?
The building inspector has it.
The building inspector has the letter, who did, who did the work, the trees that were, the names of the trees, type of trees.
And did the planning board receive this? No, we're not unreceived of this.
They did not have to. It was all resolved in the building department.
Well, I think we should get a copy of that.
You can.
Okay. Yeah. Because really, it's, there are trees that are shown on a plan that we're ultimately approving. And so, that was to take care of a violation. But I think it's beneficial for us since we're the reviewers and we, again, we have to approve the subdivision. So, if, maybe Ben, I don't know if they're maps, was, or did you do a map or it was just a letter?
I'll find out what, what, what.
This GPS plotted, we didn't, we didn't plot it onto a physical map yet.
Okay.
Don't have to, because it's all done. I don't want, it's, it's all extra money.
The inspector came out, looked at it, seen that the trees are all dead.
Okay. Well, we'll talk to Ben, and then we'll get back to you as far as what additional information we may need. And my, related to my concern that were any trees pulled on someone else's property? So, all right?
We'll look into that, too.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Thank you, folks. There's a parking lot. We've got cookies to eat here. So, can, can we take a brief 10-minute break before we go into executive session so that Mike and Mark can leave? Okay? Okay. So, we're gonna take a 10-minute break before we go into executive session, guys, and open up some cookies. All right. I would, after our brief break, we need to enter into executive session. So, I would like to enter into executive session, and I'll make that motion so that we can discuss the planning board attorney responses that we receive for purposes of replacing our planning board attorney who's retiring. Mike, I have a second.
And I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. With that, we will enter into exec. Wine bottle.
We could have a wine bottle.
My fake one? All right, folks. I'm gonna make a motion that we exit executive session. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And based on our deliberations in executive session, I would like someone to make a motion that we appoint Burke, Mealy, Golden, and Naughton, LLP, for the remainder of 2019 as our planning board attorneys. Ashley Torrey will be our primary attorney and Mr. Golden will be the backup attorney when Ashley cannot be present. And we're doing this to the end of 2019 because we annually appoint our attorney here, the Monroe Planning Board.
And this is due to the retirement of Mike Donnelly?
And yes, this is due to the retirement of Mike Donnelly from practice. So, would someone make that motion?
I would like to make the motion as described by our chairperson.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, why don't we do a roll call?
Anthony?
Aye.
Bonnie?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And with two being absent.
It's five to zero.
Five, zero. So, our motion passes. And I'd like to make a motion to close our meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.